Morning, everybody. Welcome. Bienvenidos. This is the regular meeting of the Taos County Commission, September 3rd, 2024. The time is 9:01. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll for the court, please?
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vila.
Present.
Commissioner Brush.
Present.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Present.
Chair Romero.
Present. Move to the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Mascherini, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the state of Mexico, the state symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Vila to second. Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vila.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. We move to awards and recognitions. Manager, Hara Mio.
I hear you. Good morning, everyone. Daniela Marcus is here to present to you the new hires for the month of August. First up, we have Brianna Fernandez, Assessor's Receptionist; Tomas Medina, firefighter EMT; Carlos Martinez, Adult Detention Cadet; Cefanaya Lovato, Election Specialist; Maya Santi Esteban, Adult Detention Cadet; Lawrence Torres, Adult Detention Cadet; and Jeffrey Mandonado, Road Maintenance Operator 2. If you could please help us, welcome them to the Taos County team.
Thank you.
For our next presentation before call up this Trahir, I'd also like to recognize other individuals with their years of service happening now in August. It just happened in August. For E-911, Keegan Morgan celebrated one year. Daniela Marcus just celebrated one year. Mike Medina from Solid Waste, one year. Feather Romero, one year. Brandy Huerta, one year from Fire and Rescue and from Facilities. Jonathan Dominguez is celebrating one year. Jose Mondrago is from E-911, is celebrating one year. And from the Assessor's Office, Veronica Romitas is celebrating one year. From the DWI program, John Vaughn is celebrating two years. Brandy Swazo is celebrating three years with Human Resources. Alexandra Valdés is celebrating six years. Crystal Ortiz from the Adult Detention Center is celebrating seven years. From Fire and Rescue Department, Felicia Sanchez is celebrating eight years. From Dispatch 911, Eliza Espernosa is celebrating eight years. And from Animal Control, Richard Sanchez celebrated 12 years. And then Fire and Rescue, David Varela is celebrating 17 years. Our Treasurer, Paul Santi Esteban, total years with Taos County, including her years as treasurer is 19 years. And then in the month of August, Gina Ilum, our Human Resources Director, is also celebrated 26 years. And with that, Mr. Trahir, let's go forward. If you want to join, Paulson Elliott. We have this years of service certificate and recognition of five years of service to Taos County presented to Juanita Trahir, August 2019 to August 2024, Taos County Board of Commissioners. Juanita served as our payroll specialist over the course of these last five years. So, nobody gets paid without Juanita. So, that's how important she is. So, thank you for your five years.
Yes, thank you for having me.
For the next presentation, our 911 Director, Robert Zaragosa, is going to come and make the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Ometo, County Commissioners.
Good morning.
Roberto Zaragosa, E-911 Director. I come to you today, before you today, with some exciting news and to recognize and introduce three of our brand-new certified State of New Mexico dispatchers. It's quite a commitment that they go down there to Santa Fe doing practicals, learning their profession, learning about the career, learning all the important aspects of what it is that they're doing. So, it's a really important time in their career. It's a really, you know, it's a time for them to be able to grow and see what it is that they've chosen in this career. So, kind of wanted to introduce each one of them. If they can come up, first of all, Renee Mayastas. What I'll say, Renee has been awesome for our center. What I will say is, I know she was a little bit hesitant in going to the academy. And it wasn't because of her abilities or anything like that. It's because she's full-time mom duty with little ones. And as you know, the academy is quite a commitment. So, it takes a lot of time and effort, you know, and for her family to be able to allow her to go down there and study and pass the tests and do all those things. Luckily, she had the family support and she got it done. So, she graduated in May. And so, she's fully certified and we're proud to have her on. Next will be Felice Vasquez. Felice is another individual that came to our center. And what I will say about Felice is she came to our center with absolutely no public safety experience, no experience in the field at all, something that she wanted to try, something new that she wanted to get into. And what I will say is, as a testament to her dedication and commitment, she was in the center. She's been studying all the things that she needs to, learning locations, learning the officers, learning the codes. She's not even six months in and she's already certified. So, it's really a testament to the amount of work she's put in to learn and how serious she's taken the job, how serious she's taken, you know, all the things that she needs to learn. So, it's really another great addition to our center. And the third graduate is Gabriela Barros. So, a little bit about Gabby. Gabby came up to our center as a high school, as part of a high school program where she was visiting centers. We gave her a tour of the facility and I ended up bumping into her later on in the courtyard some weeks later. And she told me how interested she was in it and if she could do some ride-alongs, if you will, or come in and see how everything was going. So, she came into our center. She sat next to experienced dispatchers. She started to try and learn, listening to phone calls, listening to all that. She decided that it's something that she wanted to pursue. She continued with the learning. Again, she didn't have any previous public safety experience. She was still in high school. She was basically interning for us. And she came on board. And again, she's not even six months in. And she is, you know, she has totally, you know, taken the job head-on and she's doing great. We're really proud of her. She, so, you know, at such a young age, she's already taken on such big responsibilities. But she's doing great. So, thank you. So, with that, with the, that's, with all three of them graduating, I'm happy to announce that our staff from top to bottom is 100% New Mexico certified. Now, I don't know the stats on it, but I would assume that there's not very many like that in the state due to the turnover in dispatch centers. So, we've been lucky to retain and recruit some really excellent individuals. And so, for us to be from top down fully certified, it's really a good feat, I think. I think so from any citizen calling, whatever time of the day, whatever day it is, you're going to get a certified New Mexico dispatcher on the other end of the line. And so, that's great. So, I think it's a positive move for our center. And lastly, I just wanted to kind of give a quick rundown of the push that we have for training, trying to push that training, trying to push. Because of that, we want to get everybody, all the training that they can to be the best because you can only, you know, you're only as good as your training is. So, having said that, you know, our next goal is for me to be able to stand up here before you and say that we have 100% advanced telecommunications. And I think that we can do that. So, and I'd like to thank Mr. Hara Mio and Mr. Seba for backing me up in all the initiatives that I'm doing. And I wouldn't be able to do it without their support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Roberto, and congratulations, graduates. I'm graduating from the academy and on your certification.
Thank you.
We move to public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak shall limit their comments to three minutes. So, anyone wishing to speak for three minutes. We can't take any action because it's not anything on the agenda. But if anyone would like to speak for three minutes, please come forward. State your name and your.
Jan Stotz. No problem. Commissioners, I just want to add some more things to your list of what you're doing today because you look like it's a busy day. My remarks are concerning the Veteran Cemetery. And I want to stress a need for early application because what I've heard is we're not even on the agenda by the Veterans Administration Cemetery and Property Division. And so, the sooner we get our formal application and submitted to the VA, we will be able to through our congressional delegation to enhance the county's budget with federal takeover as opposed to maintaining it ourselves and to prevent a wrongful internment of someone who claims to be qualified, to be buried and buried there, which would lead to denial. And I know we have a November 11th celebration and official recognition of the Taos County Veteran Cemetery. In addition, we would, I know it's on the agenda today that you're going to approve the budget for the proposed budget. We would like to get a copy of that so that, you know, for the operation of the cemetery. We would like to obtain a copy of that at some point. We noticed, Francis noticed this poster the other day from the VFW. And, you know, they were, I don't know what they were meeting about or anything, but we noticed that Veterans National Cemetery in Santa Fe, Victor Vasquez was there. And we noticed that the Mexico State Office of Veteran Services was there. And our county manager was there. And we never got notice. Neither the primary fundraisers and true advocates for National Cemetery, Yaki in Taos, Francis Cordova, Billy Knight, Hubbard Romero, nor myself were contacted by the county manager regarding this, if the Veteran Cemetery was bought up. So, those are the only things I am requesting be noted. We would like to, when it comes to the Veteran Cemetery, we would like to be notified because we went out and we got the money through the legislature and lobbying and everything else. And we are definitely concerned about the county's fiscal budget for until it becomes a National Cemetery. And if we can save the county money by getting that done, well, I'm writing my congressman and I'm writing Senator John Tester, the head of the VA Commission. So, we need to get this thing approved as fast as we can to save the county's budget and revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yeah, there are several items on the agenda related to the cemetery. I think we even have an announcement considered regarding the dedication later on this fall. So, we'll keep you informed. Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hi, Commissioners, County Administrators. I'm Jennifer Paris and I work with the Solid Waste Department as an environmental consultant. I'm speaking today to show my support for the needed increase in the solid waste fee and the additional fee for recycling. Recycling saves dumping fees for solid waste and reduces the amount of waste going to the landfill. I've been working with solid waste to increase recycling by successfully writing the applications for the last two recycling and the illegal dumping grants from the New Mexico Environment Department. I work with Edward Lorenzo Daniel and now temporary employee JD, John Day. I see the large amount of work that they do and it's amazing amount of work that they get done. So, kudos to them. At the same time, I'm constantly approached to see if the county is making any progress in this area. Many people don't even know that there is recycling in the county or that the county website now has a tab on recycling. But be assured that there are a great many people in Taos County that want recycling. That said, I know about the high percentage of people who don't pay their solid waste fees, many of whom struggle to pay their monthly bills. However, if around 50% of solid waste invoices go unpaid, it's not clear if the 50% who do pay will generate enough income to make up for that shortfall. It does make sense to publicize widely that a lien is placed for not paying solid waste fees, but not saying that it's unenforceable. I think that's bad psychology. And I also think it's important to say publicly how the public must work together to cover the solid waste services. I propose that along with the increased rate for recycling, that the county advertise step, which is the Sustainable Taos Environment Program that Edward brought to the administration some months ago. The step concept has the positive support of the New Mexico Environment Department. People can be informed on the benefits of recycling and how to do it for maximum impact. And this will result in enthusiasm and support for recycling. I know there are concerns for liability, but other counties in New Mexico successfully enlist volunteers to help with recycling. Should you choose the option of $24 a year increase plus $30 annual fee for recycling, please publicize that the $4.50 a month could eventually lead to the transfer stations providing more service and more plastic-walled reuse sheds, I hope. Repair and reuse are better than recycle. But recycling saves natural resources because much of the material we take to Santa Fe and Albuquerque goes to be used in remanufacturing. And the proceeds for our local loads come back to support recycling. I sincerely hope you will approve the new fee structure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. My name is Daniel Pritchard. I live at 926 Calle Conquistador here in Taos. I am on the Executive Board of Renewable Taos and I would like to provide two comments this morning. Number one, the Renewable Taos is sponsoring again this year. The Electric Vehicle Expo held on the 28th of September from noon to four o'clock in the afternoon at the Taos Public Library. We expect some dealerships. We expect a number of privately-owned electric vehicles. We have a speaker program. And we also expect 200 or 300 people to attend. The other comment I'd like to make is that I am in support of additional fees to pay employees to expand the recycling program in the county. I believe my opinion represents the opinion of many of our members of Renewable Taos. The county staff are currently managing, that are currently managing the recycling program have been very innovative and doing a great job, but it's clear that they need additional support. A modest recycling fee would go a long ways towards improving the resiliency and sustainability of the greater Taos community and all while reducing the amount of waste that we have to bury at the landfill. I think it's pretty clear that it would be cheaper and healthier to expand the recycling program than to expand the landfill. So, thank you for allowing my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Vanessa Stevens Hall. Yesterday evening, shortly before 7:00 in Echo Park, I heard loud talking and looked at the source. A man was tossing belongings from the front and back seats of his car. He began shouting at someone in the front seat, quote, "Get out of my car," end quote. A woman with a baby in her arms and tears in her eyes moved to leave the car. Evidently, she wasn't moving quickly enough. He moved to the passenger side, pulled her from the vehicle and then shoved her away, all the while screaming at her. Standing a few yards away, stood a frightened, crying little girl, about four years old. I wonder how she'll remember that incident? And I wonder if maybe she hadn't had that same experience before. I picked up my phone and was going to call the police. I thought otherwise, maybe she didn't want the police involved. So, I rode out of my car with the phone and was going to ask her. As I did so, he was driving away, tires squealing, the passenger door flying open. I asked her about the police and she hesitated and didn't seem to want to involve the police. And then I said, "Is there anyone else? Is there someone else that you'd like to call?" And again, she hesitated with tears in her eyes. Three other people who had also come to her aid were there. And one of them at that point said to her, "My girlfriend's waiting for me in my car over there. I'll take you. I don't know where they went. I don't know what happened to her. I hope this community will find her. I hope they'll find her and I hope they'll give her the assistance that she needs." I don't know what else to do. What she said was, quote, "He doesn't care about the children," end quote. So, I assume he's the father. I don't know that for a fact. I don't know anything about them. But I certainly hope this community finds her, assists her, helps her to realize that she needs to confront that man with his toxic masculinity. And that's a whole nother subject, toxic masculinity. It reminds me of something that happened to me a few years ago. I was in the parking lot of a local grocery store. What appeared to be an older man with a beard, although that may have been misleading, approached me and said, "Slice of pizza." And I said, "No, I'm sorry. I don't, you know, I don't have any pizza." And he almost, he did an about-face that would have made a drill sergeant in boot camp proud and began to walk away. And I thought to myself at that point, why isn't there someplace where the man obviously needed some kind of assistance? Why isn't there someplace that I could have said, "Here, I know where you can, where I can take you or someone can take you and you can get the help that you need." A few months ago, in front of the town council, I related a conversation I had with the Town Chief of Police about wanting, and I'm almost finished, about, "I would like to see, I would like to have seen and still would like to see the lodge." What's the lodge across from the Walmart? Golden, not Golden, not Sunset Lodge, Sun God Lodge. I'd like to see some, find some foundations, buy that property, turn it into both accommodations for people like that man who may or that woman who may need help and also rent it as affordable housing. Learn what it means to put affordable housing and to put people in the middle of our communities so that we can help them. And buy the lot, the empty lot next to it across from Walmart and create what I call a community services campus. I could say more about it. My time is up. I wish I had five minutes and I could talk about that also. Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Not, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item on the agenda, item four, is a public hearing. And it is regarding.
Approval Minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right by, to give backup to number, 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 number two, number eight. The Minutes, Approval of the August 20th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move Approval of the August 20th, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes with one small edit on page 15, line 613, with reference to now closing the public hearing. It says now, not closing the public hearing. And goodness, we did close the public hearing at some point. So, instead of not now.
That is correct. Okay. Is there any other changes or amendments?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve the minutes as amended. Any further questions, comments? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vila.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And now we move to the number nine, Public Hearing Regarding Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding An Application for a Restaurant Beer and Wine License With, Within Premises Consumption Within Premises Consumption and Patio Service From the Golden Piñón Restaurant. Jaime Ramírez Golden Piñón is, please come forward.
Morning Commissioners. My name is Jaime Daniel Sainz. I am Jaime Sainz Ramírez's son, just helping him out today.
Hi, guys. My name is Jaime Sainz. He talks for me because he talks better English than me.
So, we are here to, expecting the approval and hopefully of the BNY license for a restaurant, Golden Piñón, at the Quail Ridge.
Okay. Are there any questions of applicants for this? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, your food is wonderful. Thank you. I'd like to move Approval of Restaurant Beer and Wine License with On-Premises Consumption and Patio Service at the Golden Piñón Restaurant in Alprado, at the Quail Ridge.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, the second by Commissioner Vila to approve this license. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vila.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you. Gracias. Next item on the agenda, Resolutions And Ordinances on number 10. First one is A, Discussion, Consideration And Decision Regarding The Approval Of Resolution Number 2024-42, A Resolution Sustaining The $5 Minimum Penalty On Deliquent Property Taxes And Imposing The Statutory Civil Penalty For Tax Year 2024. Who is presenting? Nobody from the Treasurer's Office is here. Procedurally, this happens every year where they waive that $5 assessment fee that happens. And for good example, this for a lot of the properties that are on the other side of the river, all those little parcels of property that the Treasurer's Office has to deal with. And then it's assessed a $5 fee. So, this is waiving that fee. Okay.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Behill to approve, second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mosqueterias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And now we move to B, Item B, which is Discussion, Consideration And Decision Regarding The Approval Of Resolution Number 2024-43, A Resolution Authorizing And Approving Submission Of A Completed Application For Financial Assistance And Project Approval To The New Mexico Finance Authority. Mr. Chris Muirhead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Chris Muirhead with Mabre Form Bond Council for the county. This is the next step in that process. We started last month. We had the introduction, a resolution or a resolution adopted to authorize publication of an ordinance, which is down the road. Since that meeting, this relates, of course, to the half percent hospital gross receipts tax and the financing to raise capital for the hospital and the nursing program in the county. Since that meeting, the county's financial advisor, RBC Capital Markets, went out and explored the different ways that you could possibly raise capital for the bonds, one being through a public marketing where you go out to investors and you present your case and see who's interested in investing in the bonds, the other being through the New Mexico Finance Authority, which is a local, which is a state entity that provides lending services for governmental entities. And in consultation with the county manager, they recommended, RBC recommended going through the New Mexico Finance Authority, which does borrow their funds at a AAA rate and passes those on to the borrowers, in this case, the county. And that was determined to be the most economical, best way to move forward with issuing the bonds and raising capital for the projects. So, the Finance Authority requires that the applicant or the governmental unit entity submits a resolution to them showing that the governing body is in support of, of the application and moving forward. That's what the resolution in front of you is. And it approves the application in the amount of $20 million roughly that will be presented to New Mexico Finance Authority Board for their consideration and approval with that county hospital gross receipts tax being the source of repayment. This is just the opportunity for the Commission to be updated on that and to provide your support that yes, the Finance Authority is the correct way to move forward. And timing wise, the Finance Authority's Board would meet late September to approve the project. Given the size of the borrowing, which is $20 million, they would issue their own bonds to raise capital to then lend to the county. That won't happen until the end of 2024, early 2025. And again, county manager in consultation with RBC, and Brent can speak to this, was the preferred route to make sure that the revenues are coming in and make sure that we've targeted properly the amount of the borrowing. So, this is the next step in the process. We wouldn't probably be back until December with an ordinance to approve the financing. But this is an important step to keep the ball moving so that the Finance Authority can approve the county and approve this project. And there's no indication that they wouldn't. This is a very strong revenue source for statutorily approved project. Have any answer any questions or turn it over to Brent if he has anything to add?
No, I think Chris covered it fairly well. You know, this is a new process for all five of you. And going through the Finance Authority and doing this type of bond, I think Chris covered it perfectly. So, like you mentioned, it's an early part of next year. Will the hospital see any bond proceeds? So, then in earnest, they can start working on the renovations to the building at that point. And there's still some, there's still some work that needs to happen between the county and the hospital on, on the drawdowns and getting all that clear. So, we have enough time to get that squared away by December. Question? Just one. So, 20 million plus, this is over how many years that a hospital can receive this revenue?
So, Mr. Chairman, for the Commission, the intention here is the 20 million would be based on the anticipated gross receipts tax revenues. RBC runs an analysis to say, okay, these revenues annually produce X number. That will support debt service over a 10-year period to support $20 million in bonds. So, the idea is, okay, let's maximize the amount of bond proceeds at the front end with the idea that the statute runs 10 years. What can that produce? And that gets you the $20 million. And so, so it would be a one-time, at least on the front end, of 20 million in proceeds. There might be some short, smaller issuances toward the back end in the later eight, nine, 10-year period, but it is a 10-year bond.
So, essentially, the county is asking, is acting as a fiscal agent for the hospital?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Very similar to the education bonds that were before that this provides. You as the governmental entity impose the tax, get the revenues. The state legislature requires that those revenues be used for debt service. And so, that's why you issue the bonds, but you're doing it for the benefit, in this case, of the county hospital.
Okay. If there are no further questions, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-43.
We have a motion by Commissioner Behill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mosqueterias. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mosqueterias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. And we move to C, Discussion, Consideration And Decision Regarding The Approval Of Resolution Number 2024-44, A Resolution Repealing And Replacing Appendix One Of Ordinance One Of Ordinance Number 2020-6, Setting Solid Waste Fees Pursuant To Section 13. Mr. Jason Silva.
Good morning, Chair Romero. Hello, Commissioner. Thank you for allowing me to present. As I spoke to the solid waste rate increases last week, I come for you today just to identify the, the county resolution and how this is going to be changed and structured over the next four years. So, I stand for any questions at this time?
If I may.
We should really...
So, I've looked at this in depth and I know that we had a conversation about, about individuals, more in particular seniors that might not be able to afford some of the fees and fee increases. So, I would like to, Commissioners, discuss and bring to your attention that North Central Solid Waste Authority has, in Espanola, has a application for seniors. And this helps them with some of that, those fees. I would certainly like for us to look into it and, and hope that we can implement something like this in Taos. And so, Commissioners, I don't know if you have any other questions, but I, we'll go into pause for a moment here.
Commissioner Brush?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Behill. Is that application from North Central for all seniors or is it income determined?
Good question. So, the way this appears and it says North Central Solid Waste Authority, Senior Low Income Application. It is proof of age must be 65 years of, years of age or older, and it's based on income. And so, just to let you all know, basically, in the Assessors' Office, it's the same thing. They do have a 65 and older valuation freeze based on age and income. So, just looking at that data, it gives you a general idea what we're going to be looking at in this in regards to, to assisting. It doesn't waive the fee entirely. What it does is it gives them a little bit of an adjustment. And so, I think this is worth looking into. And once again, looking at that data, I know back in the days, we were hitting about 300 individuals that would come in and apply. I don't know what that data is these days, but. So, with that being said, I don't know if there's any other questions, Chair. I will make a motion to approve, but with recognition, adding this to the, to, to, to the plan, to the program.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Behill to approve with this amendment to it. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Romero. And just for clarification, so the, this actually is, is approval of the, the rate survey that was done. And then under Article One, is it? I didn't get to it. Let me see if I can get to it. What, what are the actual increases? How would they come about and what, what does it move up to?
So, the rate study will be structured over the next four years. In 2025, we'll have a $50 increase to solid waste fee and then there'll be a $15 recycling fee. So, and then in two years, in 2027, they'll have an additional $50 to solid waste and then another $15 for recycling. So, we're trying to establish this, as we're trying to distribute this over four years so it doesn't hit everybody in the pocketbook immediately. But based on benchmarking throughout the state, Taos County was identified as the lowest solid weight, waste rate fees. And right now, we're bringing it up to the standard that we need to, to work within our confines. You know, the demographics of our county is much larger. On the night transfer stations that we have, the trucking that it takes from each logistical areas to take it into the solid, the, the town of Taos landfill, which is, we're part of the Regional Landfill Association. At that point, we're recovering the cost. You know, this isn't, this is going to bring a solvent, you know what I mean, and hope that it will, we're going to fulfill all our needs and maybe have a surplus of money. But at this point, you know, over the years, by not going through this, we're having to supplement a lot of these rates through our general operational fund. So, right now, we're going to be a true enterprise account that will be moving forward. So, so to answer the question, it was kind of a long winded story of what the structure is going to look like. But yes, it's going to be a total of, it's going to be structured over two years in 2025 and then 2027, we'll come back before you and pass another resolution.
Chair.
So, at this time, the recycling fee would be 15 instead of the 30 that had been proposed earlier. Commissioner Behill?
Right. And then just to break that down a little bit more, the billing cycles are quarterly, correct?
Yes.
So, it's not going to hit entirely in one shot as well?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's...
Just to clarify, somebody could pay it all at one time?
If they would like to.
But if, if it's more economical to, to do it quarterly, then that's allowable.
Yes.
Okay. And another thing, if I may, I'm sorry, I jumped to, to making that motion really quick without further discussion, but thanks for the discussion. I did want to say that, that I know that the solid waste is working on notifying those that have not paid so that they're aware that there is a delinquency. That's much like what Treasurer's Office does. And they've done such an awesome job by identifying all the delinquent taxes, calling individuals, working out plans. And so, I'm really grateful to hear that that's happening
Yes.
in solid waste. And I think that will change, could change our numbers in the future, Commissioners. So, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a motion.
Chair Romero, if I may.
A second. We have further discussion.
I do have a, I just, I just want to make a comment. Jason, thank you for taking this on. I know it's been a lot of hours and a lot of work to try to catch up after, you know, maybe almost 10 years of this not being considered. And I, I wish we didn't have to raise fees, but I also wish that I paid the same price for everything that I paid in 2014. And it just isn't, you've made the case very clearly and our rate study done independently made it very clearly. It's not realistic to not adjust this. It's the responsible thing to do to adjust it. So, that's my long-winded way of just saying thank you for taking this on and thank my, my peers up here for being willing to hear this. It's, it's, it's time we do something. And again, I wish we didn't have to, but Commissioner Behill, thank you too for bringing forward a proposal for how we protect our most vulnerable seniors. That's important too. So, thanks.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes, I just, give me a second here.
If I may say something, you know, I plan on trying to, or will work with our, our local delegation that supports us in Santa Fe. I still feel that at some point, this has to be changed at the state level. But for us to get a 100% collection rate on this, I would love to see if we can encompass this into the property tax. I know it's not, it's not, it's not being completed now and I can't say it's unconstitutional, but for it to be changed at that time, we'll have a 100% collection rate. And at the end of the day, I, I don't want to raise anybody's fees to make this come forward. But the way I look at it from, take out of my county hat and put it on the constituent hat, I would rather see the money that we have being dispersed instead of, when you have an opportunity to have a, an enterprise fund that can fulfill its debt by itself and, and, and kind of work off of that, those fees, that you don't need to require any money from the general fund. That money, by taking this on, the money that we have that has been distributed from the general fund to support this, can go supporting 24-hour service and, and pinasco for EMS seven days a week. This could support more officers on the street, support, you know, our detention center. You know, each of those, I mean, call them drains, looking at through financial, look of it, because they are drains, because there's no revenue coming in through the door. But there are needs that our community uses on a day-to-day basis for public safety. So, when we look at this rate study, at the end of the day, we'll be solvent on our end that we can conduct business on our own without having to dip into our piggy bank. And then that can support, like I said, additional staffing for EMS, law enforcement and detention officers. So, just wanted to kind of point that out.
Right. And, Chair, I think you just nailed it. I was just going to point out those things. You said it very well. Just looking at the Treasurer's delinquent or the rate that we use when we're doing our budget, it's 91%. So, if you look at property tax, if you look at adding it to that, that in itself proves that we would do better
Yes.
adding it to the tax, property tax.
Thank you, Commissioner Behill. And so, we do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2024-44. So, if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mosqueterias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Silva, for your work on this.
Thank you.
Move to 10D. This is Discussion And Consideration And Decision Regarding The Approval Of Resolution Number 2024-45, A Resolution Approving Physical Inventory For Taos County Assets. Ms. Elsa Behill.
Good morning, Chair, Commission. Before you is Resolution Number 2024-45. We do this every year. This is a, actually a state statute requirement as well as for the audit. So, each department gets a copy of any capital assets of 5,000 and over and certifies the page that those items are still within their respective departments. And that is what is attached behind this resolution. That is a requirement. So, I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for us? None?
No questions with that. Motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-45 is read.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Behill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mosqueterias. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mosqueterias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Elsa.
Thank you.
And we move now to 11 Contracts And Agreements, MOUs And Bids. A is Discussion, Consideration And Decision Regarding Granting Authority For The Taos County Manager To Sign The Final Contract, TCC 2024-38, Western Pacific For On-Call Engineering Services. Again, Elsa.
Chairman, Commission, before you, we're asking to grant authority for the county manager to sign off on the final contract once rates are fully negotiated for these engineering services. As you are aware, this RFP was awarded at the last commission meeting for on-call services as a multi-award. At this time, this contract itself would, would encompass about $200,000 depending on the task orders at hand. So, if you review the, the contract that, or the sample contract provided, the contractor or us as a customer would initiate a task order to the engineer and the engineer would review it and get back to us as to what work they can conduct and what the price would be. And then it would be agreeable. This is something that the state also does. So, this is where we So this is where we kind of took that step to mimic what they have in place for these type of on-call engineer services. And I stand for any other questions.
Questions for Elsa. So, uh, so on the RFP, last, last meeting, we also approved JR Engineering.
Yes.
Is there a contract coming forward?
We are working on that together with the Public Works Director. But at this time, we're trying to get this contract in place only because WH Pacific is already involved with several projects that are ongoing. And we want to make sure we stay on the target deadlines. And in order to do that, I have to renew their contract in place because their old contract died on June 30th at the end of the fiscal year. So all work kind of stopped at this point until we can move it forward.
Okay. If I may, Chair, Chairman Romero, I also kind of nailed it there. But what I have is currently our Public Works Director. Uh, we have a bridge, we'll get the bridge in Pinellasco. I have, uh, Blueberry Hill Road, the second. These are our engineers from the previous contracts. So I need for them to continue, uh, Leo Valencia Road. So there's about four projects that we have in, in line that I need to get this pushed through. So I can try to finish up projects or go into the beginning of the year or complete design. Tomolder Road, all the major projects. So that's why I'm trying to push this one forward till we start working, uh, on that next one, on the next contract for the, for the dual approval.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Silva. Any further questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve a decision regarding granting authority for county manager to sign the final contract, TCC 2024 dash 38, um, on-call engineering services.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mascherini. Second by Commissioner Romano. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you, Elsa. And now we move to, uh, B, uh, discussion and decision of acceptance of a capital appropriation grant from New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Grant Number 24 dash 13172, to plan, design, construct, renovate, furnish and equip improvements, including roof replacement and accessibility compliance for El Prado Community Center. Mr. Chris Madrid.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is one of eight that are going to be very similar in nature. If appropriate, I can try to deal with them all together, one at a time and, and get feedback as we go.
Yeah, I think so. They all deal with the capital outlay came in this year. And so these are grant agreements?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is, as mentioned, uh, $100,000 to design, construct and renovate the El Prado Community Center. Um, this one I, we have in mind, finally fixing the roof, the roof issues. This gets us, uh, partly there. And we're looking for other funding to, uh, complete that particular project. Here I do want to commend, uh, Dr. Cordova. Uh, we're always, we don't like being surprised with grants that come from the legislature that we knew nothing about. Here she waited her turn. She conducted planning. She also spends time writing grants, trying to get other funding for this facility. And I'm pleased that we're finally able to, to get some money towards that facility and get this work done. Uh, the next grant is Item C. This is $5,370,505, uh, to design, construct and renovate the historic courthouse. This is our ongoing project. This is the last part of our capital stack. We have, uh, some other federal dollars coming in to support this. But, uh, this predominantly should complete the funding, complete our capital stack and allow us to finish this project. Uh, next is Item D. Uh, this is $75,000 to conduct a feasibility study on, uh, developing a animal shelter. This was in our, our ICIP, I believe. So something that we were planning on and requested and received. Uh, next item is item.
Mr. Chair, and Chris, could I just quick, it was actually not on our ICIP. It wasn't, um, uh.
That is correct. It was not, but we did receive it.
Offered it.
Yeah. But in any case, it did come in.
Yeah. It did come in. So we're grateful for, for that, but.
All right. I apologize. I, I just recall being aware of it and not being surprised by it.
There's a lot you're dealing with here.
Item E is $100,000 to design and construct at the Yanoh Camado Community Center. And this is to pave the, the parking lot. And I believe, uh, the engineering for this has already been completed. So this one should be able to move, uh, fairly quickly. Item F is $171,258, uh, for our sheriff vehicles. Item G is $100,000, uh, for Talpa Community Center for parking, storage and, and gate repair. And those, those conclude our, our grants on the, the DFA capital outlay side. Uh, Item H is 1.263 million. And this is, uh, from housing and urban development. And this is, uh, the additional capital stack for the, the historic courthouse. And then finally, we have $852,000, uh, from Small Business Administration. And this is, uh, directed towards our community center network. Here, these are funds to work with our partners at these individual community centers to conduct outreach to small businesses and to help people get into the workforce. Uh, in order to do this, we need to have good quality centers for them to, to come and visit. So we did set aside in this grant, $300,000 to do repairs, to upgrade HVAC, to get bathrooms where they need to be. And we requested, we budgeted $200,000, uh, for furniture, uh, computers, uh, smart boards so that meetings can be conducted and people don't have to come into town or go to Santa Fe or Albuquerque to receive services. They can go to the center, uh, get on a computer and have that interaction and, and make those connections.
Okay. And at this point, Chris, maybe we should approve, um, B through H, which were all capital outlay, and see if there's any questions on those. And then do the one on the SBA.
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions on the items from B through, through, uh?
G.
Mr. Chair.
Through, uh, through, through G.
We have to do them individually.
We have to do them individually? Okay. Tried to expedite it.
I'm going to pause with you.
Okay. So let's go back to B then. And if, are there any questions on that?
No questions. I would just like to make the motion to approve acceptance of the capital appropriation grant to plan, design, uh, grant number 24 dash 13172 to plan, design, construct, renovate, furnish and equip improvements for the El Prado Community Center.
Can we have motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve, uh, Item B. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini. Chair Romero.
Yes. We move to C. This is on the, on the historic courthouse. This is on the, the big one, actually, the five, what was it? Five, uh?
$5,370,000.
$5,370,000.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Grant 24 dash one, I'm sorry, 24 dash I3176. And that is, uh, for the historic county courthouse.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Veal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brush. And this is a one, big one to continue the improvements, um, at the historic courthouse on Plaza. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we move to D, which is the one on feasibility study for the, for the shelter and it's 75,000. Is there a motion to approve Item D?
Motion to approve.
Commission, motion by Commissioner Romano. With discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay. And a second by Commissioner Veal. Go ahead on the discussion.
Uh, my question is going to be, is that one, are we going to sit on it, there around with it? Because for the last three, four months, we haven't been left even animal control. Uh, as far as the animal shelter. I know Brent has had some conversations with some people. It's just not right for the county just to sit back and let people complain to the sheriff, call us and us not do anything about it. So is the main plan going to be done with the animal shelter here in the county? What are we going to do? We can go regional or are you going to do?
So what are the steps in to complete this feasibility study?
Uh, Commissioner Romero, Chairman Romero, Commissioner Romero. Uh, the whole purpose of a feasibility study is to give us a path forward. Uh, it's one thing to have the issue. The second, next step is to, to know what you're going to do. And feasibility study will allow us to actually, uh, bring in the expertise, have an understanding of the issue, have an understanding of our options in order to move forward.
I understand that. I, I do know that there's other, uh, other counties, other municipalities that are wanting to get involved, see if they can build a regional animal, uh, animal shelter. Can we work on that with this or we get with them? What can you do on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Romero, uh, uh, for the rest of the Commission's benefit, uh, there, uh, I've been approached by one individual that, uh, would like to see if we would partner with, uh, Rio Riba County, the city of Espinoza, uh, Santo Domingo, not Santo Domingo, uh, San Luis Obso and, uh, Oke Weingia and, uh, Santa Clara to see if we could form a regional, uh, animal shelter. And that would include the municipality of Towne de Taos. I don't believe that they've been contacted yet. Uh, we're supposed to, there's supposed to be a meeting with, uh, coming up in the next week or two. That has not been set with the folks from Rio Riba County, uh, the different entities from Rio Riba. And so that hasn't been set. Uh, I do think we could use this feasibility study as part of that network to see if we can go, uh, become a regional, uh, facility as well. Uh, we'd also need land. We would need location, uh, proximity to, uh, to everyone. It would be, uh, also important, uh, some of this preliminary conversation was regarding, uh, maybe setting up a satellite in Taos, different satellites in Taos County before the animals get transferred to a, a larger facility. So I think everything's on the table, but, uh, I haven't been contacted back from that meeting.
So, Chair. So Brent, does that mean that, um, before this or when this feasibility study gets started, you're going to pose those questions to the individual? And that would be, you know, what would it look like if we just had a animal shelter here? Or what would it look like if we had a regional?
Well, I, I always think it's important to always take the conversations. If, uh, if it's, so it's important to hear what the other local governments and tribal governments are thinking as far as forming a regional one. Uh, there's no commitment from the county to look, uh, to become part of it, but it's worth looking at. This would be something that a government would run, but it would be for the benefit of the government partners, similar to JPA, like at the original landfill. So that would, as far as government structure, that'd probably be the closest model that we would have. Okay. So do you see any problems in getting anyone to respond to an RFP for a feasibility study? Uh, we've previously worked on the scope of work. Uh, Dr. Holly Johnson and a couple of other individuals did help me with that. Dr. Johnson lives here, but she, uh, works in the city of Espinoza. She's their, one of their contractors. She has other contracts as well. So, uh, outside of this regional thing, my next step was to, uh, uh, contact, uh, Myrtle Leo County. Within the last five years, they built, and I could be wrong on that timeline. I know they recently built the shelters. I wanted also to go to them and see who they used for, uh, for their design and engineering. And, because that could also help with the, the study. I think I would still take that same approach, even if it was a regional facilities. Uh, there's experts that, uh, build hospitals as an example and build clinics. And there's folks that build, um, uh, facilities like ourselves. So I'd want to find somebody that's done this type of facility before. Okay. Any further questions? If not, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, I, is there?
We do have a motion.
Oh, we did have a motion. Okay. So we're in discussion now. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve Item 12D. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. We move to E. This is Yanoh Camado, um, paving Yanoh Camado Community Center.
I will make a motion to approve, um, Grant 24 dash I3166, for the, in regards to the Yanoh Camado Community Center.
We have motion by Commissioner Veal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romano. And just, just one question. Do you know if the design has been completed on it?
Um, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is the design has been completed.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Now we move to E, which is, um, or, uh, F, which is the, the sheriff's office vehicles. Is that where it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. Any questions on that one?
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Item 12F on the sheriff's vehicles. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And now we move to, uh, this is on the Talpa Community Center, discussion, decision of acceptance of a capital appropriation grant from New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Grant Number 2413.
Move to approve.
Pardon?
Move to approve for the Talpa.
Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and move. We have motion by Commissioner Veal, second by Commissioner Romano to approve Item 12G on the Talpa Community Center improvements. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Veal.
Yes.
Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Aisha Mascherini.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Okay. And now we're on A, which is discussion, consideration, decision regarding the acceptance of, uh, housing and urban development HUD federal grant award B dash 22 dash CP dash NM dash 0620 to construct and install ADA bathrooms, ADA ramp and HBAC systems for the historic county courthouse construction project. Any, any further, further, uh, explanation on that one?
Uh, nothing further, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And again, this is a continuation of the project that's going on at the Plaza related to ADA compliance. And so it's a HUD grant.
It's a HUD grant for, uh, community development. Um, just a, a quick sidebar. One of the challenges of bringing in federal money when you have state money becomes a timing issue that truly challenges, challenges our, uh, construction management team because they want to know what we're going to use the money for. And we want to know when we're going to get it. and we wanna know when we're gonna get it, and we'll tell you how we'll use it. So it's been a real challenge, but I think we've finally nailed that down.
And the amount of this one was what?
1.263 million.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Behill to approve.
A second?
Second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And now we move to item I, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the acceptance of Small Business Administration, SBA federal grant award SBA HQ 2410119 to leverage Taos County's rural community center network to support small business development and promote workforce opportunities. Chris?
Yes, I'm here.
Jessica.
Oh. So this is, and I'm not sure if, we have Jessica here as well. SBA grant is to support small businesses and support people getting into the workforce. The thought process, there was this grant opportunity. We wanted to see how we can fit that for our community centers. The concept is, folks in our rural areas, it's challenging for them to have to come in and get these types of services, or go to Santa Fe, or go to Albuquerque. And if there was a location where folks could go and get online and receive those services, then that would extend those services out to our rural areas. But then we have to have the right type of facilities. So in this grant, we asked for $300,000 to make repairs, to have facilities able to be utilized. But we also needed the equipment, so we asked for $200,000 for computers to go out to these various community centers. And then also training, so large, large smart boards to have training. And then other funding is there to help make those connections happen and connect them to the various services. And this is $852,000.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brush.
Chris, I just wanted to say thank you to you and the whole team for like, I mean, this list is impressive, including this last one. You guys are bringing in money for our key projects and for exciting new projects that the community will benefit from. So with that, I would like to move approval to accept the SBA federal grant award, SBA HQ 2410119.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascheranes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yes.
We move to E, approval of DFA resolution. Come on there.
J.
Nope, okay. J, discussion, consideration, acceptance of a grant from New Mexico Tourism Department Destination Forward Grant Program to support interior construction and finishes of the historic county courthouse. Jessica Stern.
Good morning, Chair Romero Commissioners, nice to see you all. This is, we're just continuing on the money train here. We received a $500,000 grant from the New Mexico Tourism Department, as mentioned, to work on the interior finishes. And there is a laundry list of items here that this grant qualifies for, including lighting, mural conservation, data and communication upgrades, interactive signage inside and outside the building that tells the culture and the history of the building. And then also to work on an interpretive experience of the old jail. This is a two-year grant, $500,000 won't cover that whole list, but I'll be working with Richard to figure out what those priorities are. This is one of the rare grants that we get half of the cash upfront, so we'll be able to get started on this work right away. I'm pending your acceptance of this grant. I stand for questions.
So how much of this can get started before the completion of the, of the construction?
Sure, so once we get this approval, we'll get a purchase order and be able to send an invoice. We'll get half of the funds upfront, and then we can start right away, according to whenever Richard is ready. I think Richard is ready.
Doesn't necessarily mean that we're starting in a month or two, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, right.
I heard your question is, when is starting starting? Oh, yeah, yeah, it'll take a little while before it's actual.
And frankly, Chair, we'll take anything we can get. $500,000 is great, thank you. With that, I will make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Behill to approve. Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Motion is approved, and we move to K, which is discussion, consideration, and acceptance. Enroll as fiscal agent on behalf of the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation Society for a grant from the New Mexico Tourism Department Destination Forward Grant Program to support architectural and engineering planning and design for the renovation of the historic St. Anthony School in Penasco. Jessica.
Chair Romero Commissioners, thank you. This is the same grant program. And as mentioned, we did apply on behalf of the Penasco Valley Historical Preservation Society. I understand there's a pause on us acting as fiscal agent. This grant application happened before that pause, so we'll respect that going forward. This grant program does not allow for private organizations, nonprofits to apply, so they needed a government entity to do this. But I think this is such an exciting project in Penasco and for that area to renovate and revitalize that historic building, providing space for a museum, a learning center, community space, and a cultural venue, and more.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mascheranes, second by Commissioner Romero to approve this grant. Further questions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And thank you for your grant writing.
Thank you.
Work, thank you.
Can I add, I understand that Miguel and Ron went to school thing? Wow. Exciting project.
Amazing.
I just had to add that.
I take care of it.
I heard, I heard nothing. It'll be really exciting to see that building come back online. It's a really beautiful building, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move then to L, discussion, and consideration, and acceptance of a grant from Department of Finance Administration in the amount of $787,500 to hire a full-time firefighter and emergency medical technician positions in the fire and rescue department. Mr. Cordula.
Good morning, Chair, good morning, members of the board. Sorry, I'm frightened of cold. So I put in this year for four positions. We got funded for six, but because of our salary and the way it's going, I cut it down to four, so we can cover everything. The way this grant works is the first year is fully funded. The four positions will be fully funded. Then the second year, it's at 50%, third, or I'm sorry, 75%. Then the third year is 50%. And fourth year, the county has to cover the remaining of the positions. So we have to encumber those four positions into our payroll. Before you, Brent handed you what it's gonna cost for those four positions. So the purpose of this grant was to get boots on the ground, essentially, from the state. So we kinda pondered what we wanted to do with these positions, where we wanted to place them. So what we decided was, we need one more shift lieutenant for our 48-hour shifts. And the three firefighter EMT positions will actually go down to Penasco. So we'll have three firefighter EMTs in Penasco. So that way, in case we get a medical, two of them can take it. We still leave one paid firefighter EMT down there in case another medical happens or a fire happens. We have that paid position there along with our volunteers. So that was the thought process behind it. As you can see, it's expensive, but I think we're gonna have to start looking some avenues for funding and how we could get more funding for us. But it was a shot to get this, and there's quite a bit of county municipalities throughout the state that did receive this grant, so it's a good thing from the state. And if you guys don't have any questions, we'll go from there. Brent, you have anything to add?
I think Commissioner Behill had a question, and I'll add.
Yes, the question is, when you said this will allow some additional positions for Penasco, does that mean in, they're gonna be located in Penasco? They're gonna be there all the time?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So switching to our 48-hour shifts, that was our main goal, was to get people down there 24/7, 365, to help our volunteers. But also because of our call volume being so high, we needed, we really need four trucks, but the third truck will be down in Penasco to cover those calls. So we, our hope is to find that balance to where they're down there and our two med units work up here. Because we've been pulling Cuesta quite a bit to come over here while our med units are busy in Penasco or on other calls. So this will serve as the Penasco unit, plus also backup for the two med units up here as well.
That's really good. And then I guess a question for Brent. So obviously, we have to be proactive in identifying that funding in the fourth year, or actually even as early as next year. Do you see any problems with that, Brent?
No, it is early as next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
And so, so before you, it's year one is the first group. Year two is at 50%. And then year three, county has to cover 75%. And then by year four, we have to cover 100%. The way the state set up this grant is for new positions. Not like the sheriff's office, or the detention center, or E911, where they were getting stipend type of funds, or for existing positions covering new salaries. This was strictly for adding new things to the budget. So, so the next, the first agenda items to approve the grant, and then the next one is to add these four positions to the budget. And we still need to do a budget adjustment to increase that, but we could, this would get the ball rolling. So we do have to look at next fiscal year fully using the gross receipts tax to cover the cost of fire and rescue for the county. So it's something that we're gonna have to be, make sure we take care of ourselves. And then, as we take care of ourselves, then how we then in turn distribute back to the four municipalities.
Okay, well, this kinda lends to what Jason, Mr. Silva said earlier, why we need that general fund to, to, you know, we don't wanna be tapping into it until we absolutely need to. So this just kinda, I think, demonstrates what Mr. Silva said.
Yeah, and fire and EMS, or fire and rescue, we're growing quick. And I thank you guys for the support, Brent, Jason, everybody, for the support of our department. But I was telling Jason back there, I had a call this weekend, and I paged out five districts, and I got 10 people to show up. So we're, it's not because the volunteers aren't trying or anything, they just, I get it, they have lives or they're not around. So we're, we're getting to that point to where we need some paid staff to help us out.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve. Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Mascheranes to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill. And this is for the acceptance of the grant. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, and we move to item 12, Department, or no, I'm sorry, there's item L. Or no.
Yes.
Yeah. We just did item L. We move to 12A, discussion, consideration, and approval of four positions for the fire and rescue department. The positions will be three firefighters, EMTs, slash EMTs, and one shift lieutenant. Mr. Cordula, again.
Yeah, so it's just to add the three EMTs, but our shift lieutenants, what's gonna happen with them is we're gonna have them roaming around. So they'll be on shift, but they won't be assigned to an ambulance or an apparatus. So what will happen also is what we're trying to do to alleviate some budget issues is, if we have someone call in, because that lieutenant's not assigned to an apparatus, he or she will fill in for whoever calls in sick. So we're trying to make them just kinda roaming lieutenants to kinda cover a sick leave call-in, that way we don't, you know, get hit with overtime or anything like that. But also, it's so they can go around to both departments that we'll have and train them during the week, stuff like that. So it'll be nice, it'll help also alleviate James Hampton, the fire marshal, because we want them to get their inspector one certificate, so to help them with the short-term rental inspections as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Romero.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascheranes. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Cordula. And we move to item B on 12B. This is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of a change order request for structural shoring due to water damage at the historic county courthouse. Richard, you said a lot of things, a lot going on at the historic county courthouse.
Richard. Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, there is quite a bit going on at the courthouse. As anybody who's familiar with the project, the roof has been an issue.
Call Candy Campbell.
I might need 11, I'm not gonna do this.
Hold on. Candy?
It needed to be re-roofed. It's gonna get re-roofed, but contractors been, yeah. But these last winter and this spring have, there's just no keeping the water out of the building. And so we've suffered some significant structural damage in the southeast corner and on the southwest corner. And so at this point, it's pretty important, I wouldn't put people up on the roof if we didn't take care of the safety of the people and the building, which is gonna require shoring on those east and west walls from the first floor to the second floor, from the second floor to the wall, to the roof. It is gonna get repaired. Looks like we're getting some funding, so we can really start rolling. But right now, at this point, it's not in a, in a good position to get, have anybody on the roof. It's even a little bit precarious just to be occupying the building as we speak, because it's significant damage. This is a change order for structural scaffolding for 12 months. And like I said, it's, it's something we have to take care of, or we had to take the chance of losing those corners of the building.
Okay, Commissioner Behill.
So, thank you, Chair. Richard, because winter's upon us, how quick are we gonna be able to? I mean, another winter, will we be able, will we be able to continue forward?
Yeah. First thing we have to do is shore it, to make it safe and stable.
Okay.
With this and additional funding, we can refocus. I mean, the funding we were using was working on the ADA elements, just some of the ADA elements, not all of them, but structure and whatnot. And so now, the focus is gonna be, we could get this change order signed. If we have to adjust some of our scope of what we have under contract right now, so we can start a roof tear-off and get it covered up. We've had some discussions. It's gonna be an expensive, it's gonna be an expensive repair because we have structural damage now, not just a re-roof. We're talking about possibly doing a skeleton over that section of the roof, basically from the courthouse all the way to the portal edge. And we've used, I've used, it's a fiber reinforced plastic. It looks like screed or screeding embedded in the plastic, so it holds up really well to winds and whatnot. We build a framework over the roof, be pulling the plastic back and forth every day while the work's going on, but.
Got it.
There are ways to mitigate it. It's not inexpensive, but there are ways to keep it going and keep us.
So it should happen before the winter.
Yeah, or during winter.
What is the amount of the change order?
Change order is for $115,000 in change. And like I said, it's, we're shoring from the ground floor to the floor on the second floor, from the second floor to the roof line. And so it's a lot. The building.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Behill. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, Richard. Okay, we move to the consent agenda. Is there any item there that we need to discuss further? This is A through H.
If not, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the consent agenda, items A through H as presented.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Motion's passed, and we move to county managers' report and matters. Commissioner, manager, Armayol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll be releasing a press release today regarding the USDA funding that we're gonna, that's coming through for rolling still. As you remember, we accepted that grant at a prior meeting, but just wanted to make you aware that that press release will be coming out today. That's part of the lead-up grant type of work to help develop that property. So that'll be, that press release will come out today. Just a reminder, if you know anybody that's wanting to apply for the lodgers tax, that deadline is September 15th. And then as another reminder, two weeks from today, Jessica Stern, Chelsea Reedy, Chelsea's from TCA, she's previously presented to the commission, will be delivering a presentation on how work. We'll be delivering a presentation on how work-based learning opportunities, the arts create, a resilient workforce. This presentation will be at the International Economic Development Conference held in Denver. So I won't be here, uh, be in Denver supporting Jessica and Chelsea as they make this presentation. But, uh, I think it's quite an honor that we have a project on the national stage. I'd like to get some of JR's, uh, programs on the national stage through NACO, but that, we need to work on that, putting in for those presentations as well. So, um, so, uh, we'll be gone in two weeks at that conference. And then, uh, we received word on last week from the New Mexico Healthcare Authority issued a rule delivering, uh, regarding the delivery of medicated assisted treatments for substance use disorder to individuals in correctional facilities, including county detention facilities. This, uh, rule provides that New Mexico County Detentions will be required to provide continuation of MAT or medically, uh, this, or medically, I forgot all these acronyms. No, it's not assisted, uh, opioid use disorder to individuals who are receiving the services in the county detention facilities by no later than December 31st of 2025. So last legislative session, they made it mandatory for the Department of Corrections to, uh, have a MAT program. They're not requiring the county to have a MAT program. They're requiring us to help anybody that comes in that's already under, under an existing program to continue that service and to pay for that service. And it's something that we're already doing. So it's nothing that, um, that's kind of new to us. So it's something we're already doing. So we will be complying, but now it's, it'll be mandatory on us. I haven't fully read through the, the, the rule on it, but it's, uh, just wanted to bring it to your attention as well. And, uh, we have nothing new on the rest of the departments. As you saw the email last week, our budget to get approved. I want to thank Emily and Wendy for their hard work on that and getting that done. In the near future, uh, uh, so Cordova will be presenting a change to the, uh, resolution regarding the classification of indigent individuals. So we need to change our, uh, our, um, income threshold. So we'll be presenting that. We're work, going to be working on that over the next couple of weeks. I don't know if we'll have it ready for the next meeting, uh, but we'll be working on increasing those income thresholds, uh, for indigent patients as well, so for indigent patients. We're still working on going into, uh, Costa Elementary. We're still working, getting that opened up as soon as possible. And I'll be, uh, opening a senior program in the northern part of the county. Uh, so we're working on that. And, uh, uh, before I open it up for questions, I would like to, uh, well, two things. Uh, former county commissioner Mark Gallegos, on September 9th, he will be, uh, uh, competing in the New Mexico Green Chili Cheese Contest at, uh, at the state fair. So, uh, if you see him, wish him luck. Uh, there's, uh, some grading criteria. There's people's choice. So, uh, if you're in Albuquerque, uh, please stop by to support him at, uh, Mexico State Fair. And, uh, we'll, on County Fair Day on, uh, uh, September 12th, Nisa and Renell will be representing the county there as well on September 12th. Before we conclude or open it for questions, I would like to wish, uh, Commissioner Miguel Romero a happy birthday. As it gives me a stare, his birthday is, is on September 5th. And then, uh, uh, and so he doesn't feel alone. Commissioner Brush's birthday is coming up on September 22nd. So I won't be able, yeah, I won't be here in the next meeting to acknowledge, so I'll do it now. And so with that, I stand up and for questions.
Commissioner Vehil?
Uh, yes. Thanks, Brent. Um, do we have any data regarding the MATS program? Like how many folks are actually, because you said we've been, it's not new to us. Do you have any data? Can you bring some data?
Yes, I'm sure we do have data. I've not personally have seen it. Uh, but I could ask the detention center to provide any data that we may have.
Right. Because there is, uh, some additional community needs. And so to really understand, um, you know, the funding part side of it and how much we're really needing for that program would really help.
Any other questions for?
Oh, I would just say, can you tell Mark that he needs to try those burgers on us first?
No, I'll let him know.
That's it.
Any other questions for the manager? Not, uh, thank you, Brent, and we'll move to, uh, Veteran Cemetery update, Mr. Richard Sanchez.
Chairman Commissioners, um, Veteran Cemetery is basically a hundred percent complete. Uh, we're waiting on final inspections from the state and the fire marshals. That one might be a little bit delayed because their show starts, the last talk, last fire marshal inspection we had, that one of our projects took us almost 60 days to get the fire marshal inspection. But, um, we, it is required and we do have our, uh, fire monitoring and security monitoring. And so that kind of testing's going on, but we're basically complete, taking care of the landscaping, arranging for our equipment. Going to buy some more, start buying some of the interior equipment, mops, buckets, desks, uh, some tools for the equipment. We're basically done, just waiting for inspections.
Do we have an announcement on the dedication?
I have no idea. I have questions. People are driving in every day that I'm there, uh, asking when we're going to open the facility. I explained to them, we're working on staffing, uh, training. The dead, everybody asked about the dedication. I said, I think that they're trying, hopefully. I would think sometime in November, probably after the election because of dignitaries and getting everybody. I go, but I don't have anything, uh, firm. Uh, it's generally up to the commission and management. And hopefully, hopefully soon, because we do have a lot of people that are interested. A lot of people are talking about, uh, moving loved ones from Angel Fire to Taos. Uh, people have, veterans have passed away and have called me and I said, well, you know, if you're cremated, that's not an issue. Just please hold on to them. It will be open soon. I can't give you an exact date, but we will be open. I go, we're ready. And so that's, that's where we're at with that.
Couple of questions. So, um, I guess the big question, are we doing a grown ribbon cutting, excuse me?
Yes.
Okay.
Purposely, it's holding off a minute. We had more to discuss for the commission.
Okay. Okay. The details are saying you're holding up. Okay. But tentatively, we're?
Tentatively, we're going to have, remember, a ribbon, uh, ribbon.
Okay. And then the next question, Brent, and I know.
I hadn't told.
Okay. Yeah. And, and a couple of questions in regards to, um, some of the stuff that John had asked, but I know folks are wondering, when are we going to be able to bury someone in the cemetery? And I know there's a process. We know that we need to get training, staff training. Are we, uh, moving forward with that? What does that look like?
Yes and no. I mean, as you know, the job descriptions are, are completed. Uh, we need, uh, to set up a time with Sanofi to go down there and get trained on how to do the burials, uh, and whatever else support they can provide to us. So we, it's just a little bit of capacity right now to get down there.
I see. Okay. So we don't have a date at which?
I want to mislead the public and, and promise a date that we can deliver on.
And I appreciate that too. Just that they're asking, right?
Any other questions on the Veteran Cemetery? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the Historic County Courthouse. I don't know if we need any more update on that one.
Yeah, a little bit more. Um, elevator shaft has stopped out. Uh, the fire exit is to finished height. The hallway for the ADA entrance from the north side is complete blockwork wise. Uh, we're waiting now for the structural steel to show up for the roof decks and the hoistway and whatnot also. Um, we've done a little bit of changing in structure for the openings from the courthouse to the elevator lobby and the fire exit. Originally, we were going to pour, uh, beef up the existing bond beam. Um, we have a little bit of concern, so we've brought in the structural engineer, uh, made a little bit of, uh, changes. So we're going to have steel columns. That'll just be little bump outs with, uh, steel lentils over the two openings to add the additional support to the bond beams. There's a bond beam at the first floor, second floor juncture and then a bond beam at the roof line. And so these columns will go from our new concrete, which is structurally sound and very deep, and continue all the way up and carry those two areas when we open them up to create the elevator lobby. That's the biggest one, along with, uh, the water infiltration issue. Now that our funding is, we've already been discussing both the architect and our contractor. Once we have the total amount, then we'll develop the program, issue a big change order and hit the ground running.
Any other further questions? Is there a contractor meeting this week or next week?
Uh, we had it last week. It won't be for another week.
The following week. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And we'll move on to the general construction.
General constructions, uh, we have several projects that are, uh, pending and in various states throughout the county. Uh, Los Anago Senior Center is moving forward. We have staff there. I gotta go make a site visit tomorrow. Firehouses that are designed and probably ready for, uh, go out to bid this spring. Pinasco, uh, project, we're waiting on our civil engineer to finish the design, to get our final construction costs and issue a contract and start on that. The building itself is pretty much designed, but you have to have part of the civil, all the, and sorry, engineers, electrical engineers, uh, civil engineers, mechanical engineers in northern New Mexico down, are just, everybody's swamped. And so we can't move forward till we have that information, but it is moving forward. Uh, the bulk of the construction estimate is there, but can't ask a dirt contractor to give you a price when you don't know what you're going to do yet. Uh, that's, that's what's going on in Pinasco, but I would hope to, that we break ground before winter time there also. Ag Center, uh, is moving along. We're ready for the contract. Hondo, we've got our, uh, environmental air quality inspection and we pass out. So asbestos is, all that's taken care of. So now we can start on some construction. Yanocamado, speaking with, uh, the community up there. They've already paid for and waiting on their civil design for their baby. So now we have our money, but they still don't have a design, which was, they did contract out early spring. But that gives you an idea how our engineers are backlogged. It's just so much construction going on here in northern New Mexico. The detox center, waiting for a final proposal for phase one, for the firearms and the cleanup and the upgrades of the existing building. Uh, have the architect's proposal for phase two on my desk. And as soon as we get funds and budgets and line items for all this, we'll be issuing a bunch of contracts and, and moving things forward. Anything in particular?
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, darling. Um, Richard, I just want to say, um, my compliments to you and, and staff, whoever was responsible over the weekend. I saw the, the digital board, the sign just west of the OBL that said, hey, on Tuesday, construction on Blueberry Hill is going to resume. That kind of communication, communication is really helpful. I mean, I this morning knew not to go that way. So I, I really appreciated seeing that, like just giving folks in the community the heads up, like be prepared. This is what's happening, especially with so much of it happening around our community. So kudos to everyone who was part of that. Thank you.
Just, uh, Jason and Joe worked on that, but I also like to mention that, um, those sign boards are assigned to Office of Emergency Management, but we got those through a grant from Chevron, uh, through the Taos Community Foundation. So, uh, I knew there was extra money that they'd put there during the fire. And so, uh, that's how we got those and Chevron agreed to.
Thank you.
Let us have that.
Appreciate that.
Pay for any thing related to that. We also got a generator from that grant as well that we need to put in some extra money for the generator.
That's great background. Appreciate it. And just love that kind of move to like, just keep our community in the loop about what's going on.
It's important. Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, yes. Do you know when, uh, the classrooms will be ready at the Ag Center?
I'm sorry?
When the classrooms at the Ag Center will be ready?
You know, they're.
For use, yeah.
They're, and we'll say 95% is going to be, we're going to be waiting for inspections also, fire inspections. We haven't put the ceilings in yet. The acoustic, the grid is in. Um, we're waiting for the duct work. We did have a little gas leak in the new piping. So it's being, you have to retest it. Once it's retested and we fire everything up and it's working, then, um, then the ceilings can go in and we'll be getting inspections.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Move to item E. This is discussion and consideration and decision regarding canceling the November 5th, 2024 regular meeting due to Election Day. Manager Armio.
Yes, thank you, Chair Romero, members of the commission. At last meeting, I discussed that we have to limit the conversation on the October 15th meeting, uh, doing, due to this as a, a one-stop voting convenience center. Uh, after the meeting, I realized we should probably just cancel, uh, the November 5th meeting as well. Uh, because it's been a presidential election. It's going to be a lot of traffic in here. So, uh, it's my recommendation to cancel that. We'll probably just have, we still have two meetings in the month. Uh, we'll have the, the canvas scene meeting that, uh, uh, Madam Clerk will let us know more or less when that timetable will be. It's too early now to say, uh, when that meeting's going to be. If they get inundated with a lot of absentee ballots and all that, that slows down the counting process. So she'll let us know and then we'll just keep our regular meeting, uh, as, as scheduled that week.
The canvassing does have to be done within a week, I believe.
Within seven days. But sometimes, sometimes like this last time, we had it, they had it done by Friday, by Thursday, when we were, they were able to go on the Friday. There was, uh, I don't know if it was the last presidential election or the last governor election. We went on to day seven, uh, uh, to, uh, do that. And I think we're going to towards the end of the day on that one. So it's happened where we have had to go all the way to day seven on it, which would put us till the 12th, which will be that Tuesday.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, is there a motion to cancel?
procedurally, we do have to cancel the meeting as part of Open Meetings Act.
Okay. Is there a motion to cancel the meeting of November 5th?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Muscaranias?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Motion's passed and we moved out to 15 Commissioners Reports and Matters. A new business to be considered at future commission meetings.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And could I request, this is, um, maybe for a, a work session rather than a meeting, but it would be great as we approach the end of the period for which we're supposed to spend, expend or obligate or whichever we're supposed to do for the Rescue Plan Act funds, the ARPA funds. It'd be great to have a session on what have we spent for those relief, those federal relief dollars? And also for the LATCF, the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund dollars. What do we have left? What have we done with it? And, um, what are the things we still want to do with it? So I would love to have that kind of work session. Thank you.
Okay. 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 Anything else on the, on business to be considered for future meetings? If not, we'll move to be commissioner announcements. Any commission announcements? Nope? Okay.
I was just going to say that we were talking about communication earlier and road work. And so in Rancho's, New Mexico DOT has been working on repaving that road. So they also did have the, the big sign up and it's amazing, some folks see it and some don't, but it's been out, I think it was out like two weeks prior to or three weeks prior to, you know.
So we have construction going on in?
Yes.
Blueberry Hill downtown and in the southern part of the.
And I think this one, they're estimating about three weeks to complete. I will say a big shout out to Senator Gonzalez, him and I have been, have been talking about that and he actually, you know, went ahead and worked on.
Got some funding.
So grateful to him.
Okay. Okay. If there are no other commission announcement, board committee reports, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, Commissioner Brush. Who did you have? Go ahead.
This is for Mr. Sol, for Brent. Quick question on the bridge up or I'm getting hammered on that.
That's actually why I went to the back. Mr. Sol has been trying to communicate with Kit Carson. Kit Carson damaged the bridge. We've been trying to get them to fix the bridge or even give us the supplies and we'll fix the bridge.
Yeah, Commissioner Romero, Brent kind of said it there in so many words. This bridge isn't part of our inventory, so we can't enter, we can't go on their grounds to, to, to repair it due to the fact that it's not part of our inventory at this time. I know there's some paper showing that back in 1961, that there was a dedication of roads that were given to us, but similar to last week, there's subdivision, Gana Catan's the same way, there's subdivision in Roseco that they want to dedicate the road to us, but doesn't mean that we can accept it. So it's not part of our inventory. So there's, but to answer your question though, the issue of concern is here, this is a designated sign that's a, I think it was a 10 ton bridge or it was a five ton bridge. I got to go back to the pictures that I, I took. And based on this, that truck that went over it was exceeding it by about six tons. So essentially this is on Kit Carson that they would be responsible for the repair of this bridge. And this was alerted to us back about two years ago, and I've expressed to Kit Carson at the time that it's not a county asset, so we don't have the authority to go and repair it. But as Brett said, we did offer that our staff, if the materials are supplied for it, that we could help support it. And essentially it's just decking on the bridge, but that's where it's kind of been at, it's kind of a stalemate. And I have, I'll reach out to direct, the operations director of Kit Carson, which is Richard Martinez. I'll reach out to him immediately to kind of see what the status is on that. But I, I guess, yeah, we're still trying to work out the logistics or like logistics, the understanding of who's the rightful owner of that, because it could be dedicated to us, like same thing, like I mentioned, other roads are dedicated to us, but doesn't mean that we can, we need to accept it. Yeah, so that's like, as I said, it's an interesting, we won't be able to touch it till we actually go before our April meeting and actually accept it, that we're able to take on those, those additional roads. A lot of times subdivisions in the past, due to the, that the road is, is real property that goes through two sections of, so say if you can identify a lot line of where these two roads would meet, to make the road a component that the individual is responsible to pay the taxes of a road that's a public road, even if it's a private road. What's happening in a lot of these subdivisions, they're creating the lot land adjustments from Bardish to Bardish, but they're trying to dedicate the road to the county. So that is okay, because and that's going to be exempt from property tax. But the difference with this is, at that point, is there are they requesting for county to provide maintenance to the road? And that's where there's, there's a discrepancy at this point. There's nothing in the, in the matter, they could deed it to us and grant it to us, but doesn't mean that we're going to be accepting it as a road maintenance. It just can be real property that's kind of like it's a no man's land that they're not, the constituent is not responsible for the property taxes on that road. That's April, that we would have to dedicate that. And that's something that me and Patrick have been working on to identify if it's something that is actually our assets based on a commitment from a commissioner back and to recall the date. Yeah, right. It was like 69 or 68 when that road was, was dedicated. Now, we do have one road up there and that's the road that we're maintaining, that's Upper Valley. But this dog leg, there's no definitions of the whole, what roads we're absorbing at this time. But you know, the, the, the bridge in general, I will work on that with Kit Carson and I'll provide an update in the next meeting. Yes, understand. I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, I can take responsibility that I felt in that manner due to the fact that I still trying to seek legal advice of who's actually this, because it's so vague, there's nothing written to it, except for somebody that made a judicial decision of a commissioner saying they're adopting it, but there's, there's no ratified agreement of an open meeting, like the process that we utilize now. There's not a stamp of a clerk on there. It's just a letter saying we're going to adopt the road, but there's nothing binding to it. And that's where I think Patrick needs to, I'll, I'll work with them on this week to get that clear determination. But at this point, it's, that letter could have been drafted by anybody. Yeah. Yeah. And if, if county manager would give me the direction saying add it to the list, I will add it to the list. At this point, this is something that I think has to go through the formal process like it is now, where it goes ratified before the Board of Commissioners that is adopted and not, unless there's minutes showing that it was similar to today's agenda topic that we're granting the county manager the authority to sign it. And I understand this is a lengthy process and taking the time to, to go through there. And my apologies, because it's something that kind of falls aside when we need legal assistance, other things kind of fall, float to the top, but I'll, that's failure on my part that I'm not following through on it. So I'll, I'll accept it because on that one. But I will get your word at the next meeting. That'll be a top priority between now and the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. Thank you, Jason. Now we move to the board committee reports, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. Commissioner Brush.
Thank you, Chair Romero. I was in Santa Fe for this board meeting on August 22nd and just want to talk about one thing that happened that afternoon. They're usually all afternoon meetings with lunch, which is awesome. We had a presentation from the South Central Climate Adaptation Science Center out of the University of Oklahoma, which everybody, there were like 30 some of us in the room and people were kind of riveted because this is about climate adaptation, like the name says, not mitigation or reducing things by switching to electric and solar and wind and, you know, driving an EV. Wasn't about that. It was about adapting to what we can see coming. And that's what they presented to us, is what is coming. And they were talking to this group of northern New Mexico elected and, you know, other government workers, because the implications for infrastructure are pretty significant. In fact, they have worked with our regional transportation planning organizations, the Northern Pueblo's RTPO and the Northeast RTPO, in order to provide them this kind of information, so that our transportation planning can be prepared. But I wanted to like just share a little bit of this with all of you and with our management and staff, because there are things that we should probably be thinking about other, so that they don't cost us extra five, 10, 25 years down the road. Some of the things that they presented as again, just like tools for how we need to plan anything we're doing, from building codes to materials for roads and so on. They were looking at really localized data. It's not just, hey, the whole planet's warming or the country is warming. It was like, what's happening in this northern part of New Mexico? And they even like split it up between the Northern Pueblo's RTPO area and the Northeast, like Clayton and so on. And what they were looking at for us in our area was things like the number of expected heat waves, two to four more heat waves. And this is by like mid-century, so 20, 25 years from now. Daily high temperatures, three and a half to five degrees higher than what we're seeing right now. Our very hot days, days above 100 degrees, expect to have about 10 or so more of those each year. The length of our dry spells will be expected to increase. Our freeze thaw cycles are actually expected to decrease by as many as 35 days per year, which has a lot of implications for growing and snow melt and so on. Because it's just not going to get as cold, right? So you don't get the freeze half of the freeze thaw cycle. Our average, this I found fascinating and so did the group, and they asked actually for more follow up on specific data about snow and snow melt. Our average annual, average annual precipitation expected to increase, but the number of days with precipitation is expected to decrease. In other words, more precipitation all at once, which we've been seeing actually the last month or so, right? Less of that precipitation will be falling as snow and the snow that does fall, it's going to melt faster. So I'm just reporting back on this presentation and I can share it with, with you all, because this does have implications. I mean, we've already been seeing just in the last few weeks, rock slides, you know, flooding. So what do we need to do? What do we need to do in terms of our emergency planning, our emergency management, our flood management? Does it come down to covert sizes, water conservation measures, building codes? Because, you know, again, the room of 30 some people from all over, from Raton to Espanola, we were all like, hmm, there's a lot here that we should probably think about to make sure our communities are prepared and as safe as possible in the next, again, two, five, 10, 20 years. So I'll share the presentation around and I'll follow up, because again, the group did ask the two scientists who presented to us to get more in the data and in the weeds, particularly around snow melt and snowfall. And the, the South Central Climate Adaptation Science Center, like I said, is based at the University of Oklahoma, so one of the two scientists was from there. The other is from and based in Albuquerque. So they're, they are super like local to our area and our region, and we should feel free to actually use them as a resource if we want to reach back up to them. So that's my report back.
Thank you, Commissioner Brush. And we move to the request for out of state travel on actual reimbursement for Commissioner Angel Net Brush to attend Mountain Town's 2030 Climate Solution Summit in Jackson, Wyoming, October 15th to the 16th. Commissioners.
Chair Romero, this is the same conference that Manager Harumio and I went to last year and the year before that, there were, I think, three folks from the town and two or three from the ski valley who went. And last year, there was some important information around everything from recycling to regional collaboration around like, how can we make the biggest impact on protecting our air, land and water together? So I'm just, I don't know, I think that there's one person from the ski valley corporation going this year. Would just love to have more representation from Taos County there.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Romero. Second by Commissioner Mascherini to approve the travel. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes, and thank you, and we look forward to your report from, from this, this one, becoming an authority on, on this issue. Okay, and we are to point to adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Romero to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you all, especially all of you, John, Judy, Neil, all of you who stayed the entire meeting. Thank you for being here. There's a lot on this agenda. Thank you.